I mean, we all know that we've got to at least discuss that in some way, shape, or form, and I know that you've already started that process. It's just talking to some of the administrators to begin, but it really would be something that likely would be helpful to maybe have at a community forum where we can discuss, present, and take thoughts and ideas from the community and take a temperature, if you will, of how people might view that. So initially, though, for us to maybe identify some of the critical issues, and then from there essentially also look to identify stakeholders that make an awful lot of sense for us to involve in a community forum, and then structure a community forum around the discussion of those issues, presentation of the issue, discussion of the issue, and then essentially some assessment from there. Now, I think that the way that we could start it is with at least a discussion by the board at, again, as I said, either a special meeting or maybe our second meeting in January. But just kind of offer that as maybe an alternative to the strategic planning process that was presented to us and see what folks might think about that.
Have you thought far enough in advance as to facilitate these meetings and provide an agenda?
Well, I think that would be something that we would have to discuss as a board, and that would be one of the purposes of our general discussion to start, because did actually talk about the idea of having a facilitator, but I mean, that, you know, I don't know if people feel that's necessary or not, but that would be the discussion I think that we would maybe give consideration to at a board meeting or at our meeting regarding this. Mr. Hock?
So I remember a presentation by Mr. Brown, and then at the end of that, asking Mr. Surtisio to give us a presentation on Mr. Strategic Planning and his thoughts and what was available through the state, through NISBA, and so forth. I think I talked briefly about it a week and a half ago with him, and I don't recall getting any feedback yet, so I would like to hear because I think he would have good input as to where we need to focus our attention.
So do you want that in a -- Mr. Surtisio?
Well, there's a number of different ways that we can go. I did, and you're right, Mr. Hock, I have not gotten back to you, I did briefly look into NISBA's advertisement to see if they specifically discussed strategic planning. It wasn't apparent to me that they did, that doesn't mean that they don't have that service and it just wasn't readily in the documents that I was looking at. So I certainly can contact them if we want to go our traditional strategic planning route. What Mr. Bobstein said and what I really, I support because it didn't feel like we had the support from the different stakeholder units within our district, and I would assume maybe in the general community to go through that process as was described here by Mr. Brown. But there's different ways that we can go about gathering information, and really what we're looking for is the community and the stakeholders' input on the future of our school. You know, what we want our students to know and be able to do, what our graduates look like. We know that, you know, and really, we started our school year this year looking at a film called Education 2030 or something to that effect. Our first graders, when they graduate, it's going to be 2030, the world's going to be 2030. So what skills do our students need? Every time we have a student presentation here, they talk about the things that they're doing, the activities that they're involved in, the maker space that Mrs. Trump just talked about. So I think it's important to gauge the interest and the value that our community feels about those elements, because then we need to design the educational piece to go along with it.
One of your inputs that I was looking forward to hearing about was what direction you wanted to see and where you thought we were lacking in education, and your feedback as to what you've heard from the community as to your involvement with the community.
Yeah, so one of the things I'm working on right now, and it's going to take me a bit of time, we just recently received our last report from New York State, and that shows that the students who were tested, whether whatever grade three through 12. And I've had the administrators take a look at that and give me their first impressions. I'll be working with them to really develop a snapshot that's in a format that we can present to the board, because it does, I feel strongly it's going to show some areas where we're lacking that we need to focus on. But that other part, too, that I really brought with me here to this district was that last piece, and Mr. Paskey and I have talked a lot about, is it time for a capstone course in this district? Something that some, most, all of our students look forward to from the time they enter our district, and it's that goal in graduation of having that piece of that's active learning, involving our community, maybe a public presentation type piece, but that's going to take a lot of hands to make happen. So those are, so that's one part of what we're looking at going forward.
I think, too, I mean, just even, Mr. Hock, the questions you're raising right now, I just really think that those are valuable for us to consider, and we really need to be considering those as a board as well. And so, again, I'm looking for a mechanism, really, to do a couple of things, and that is to match up our administration, our board, our faculty and staff, and our community. And so I'm looking for a mechanism for that to happen. I'm not, and I apologize, I am not going to rely strictly on Mr. Surtisio, I mean, no offense to anyone, but...
I would just like to interrupt you and just say that you're asking us as a board to get behind your idea of the strategic planning, and I asked Mr. Surtisio to get back to us as board members on, you know, his thoughts and a presentation as to the need of this. That's the only thing I was sort of trying to gather, and still am trying to gather at this point.
Do you see any value at all in at least having the board come together and discuss something like this?
They can definitely discuss it.
Okay. I mean, that's really what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for a particular process at all necessarily.
Well, you brought Mr. Brown aboard twice, and with that, it seems as if you see a shortfall in our district, that I think maybe you have talked to Mr. Surtisio about him, that he could get behind and relate to us as board members.
Excellent. It's fine. I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, so...
If I could just give my comments, too, on this, I look at strategic planning for any large business, Forster 500 specifically, but any large business, and we're talking about a $30 million budget here, over $32 million, I think that we do need to have some kind of alignment here where we all come together with goals, with some direction for the district to get things done, rather than getting tied up in some mundane firefighting that tends to be imminent and grabs our attention. I think we have to have a clear path, and the strategic planning helps in there. I'm very much in favor of this, but we do need some parameters. I think that an experienced facilitator is critical. I don't think that we can do this on our own. I think that it has to be somebody who not only is experienced but inexperienced within the school district setting, so that they understand that, like having your people who are stakeholders, who are really, I mean, they're the ones who are really part of this district that it's going to affect the most, the parents, the teachers, the administration, and the board getting that, getting that aligned. I don't think that having this as part of a regular meeting is going to do anything of justice to true strategic planning. And I know that what we get out of it is going to be what we put into it and trying to mess this, smash it, and with a regular board, I don't feel that would be productive at all.
Ms. Powell-Forten, any thoughts?
I would second a lot. Everything that Brian said, I think we do need to take a bigger, long-term view. I don't have a specific view, Mr. Bobstein, as you said, what is the exact process, but I do think it needs to be separate time, it needs to be focused time, and that we do need to lay out some of those long-term objectives and start to develop what is a plan to achieve that. I would be in favor of a process.
Mr. Forster?
I think that's kind of what Powell-Forten said, same type of thing as far as we all, we have responsibility to look ahead and make sure that we plan ahead into the future, and by whatever means we decide to do that, it's just important that we do that. So that's how I feel about this.
Mr. Jamberon, any further thoughts?
Well, after your presentation here and discussion tonight, I think everybody's kind of got a little different thought, how we're going to perceive this, or how you wish to perceive it, you know, the process, how is the process going to look like? And I know I've always relied heavily on the administration, and I don't know if their input would be needed in this to help identify things that, you know, it's nice to be a board member, but we certainly don't know the day-to-day operations, so we rely on our superintendent and we rely on our administrators. So I guess I would, I think we need to think about a little more and maybe get more information and discuss a little bit more of what your thoughts are with Mr. Bobstein, how we could this could unfold, and how we maintain moving in one direction, and once we get a topic, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I would just say this, I don't, you know, it's funny to me, I don't, I mean, the reason I raise it is because I'm actually relying on fellow board members. And so, you know, I hear, I hear board members say that, you know, something would be valuable, and that some sort of process would be valuable, something outside of what we currently do would be useful and maybe necessary, something that we haven't done before necessarily. So what that looks like, what that involves, I have no idea. I'm just bringing an idea to the board. I don't really have anything invested in this other than, other than this, and that is that I think it's really valuable that you actually have some sort of process that you at least look at, consider, think about, and involve as many people as possible in. And so this is just one suggestion, and the real suggestion here isn't anything necessarily so specific, but it's let's get together and talk about this, and let's, and let's talk about this with Mr. Surtisio. Again, and that's all I meant by, I'm not going to rely on Mr. Surtisio alone to tell me what the future of our district is, and that's all I meant by that, Mr. Hock, and I apologize for that.
I didn't take any offense to any of your side.
No, but, okay, but in any event, so I really think it's valuable for us to talk about this stuff, and I don't want to just listen to Mr. Surtisio, and it's no offense to Mr. Surtisio, I really want to know what everyone's thinking, I want to know what the community's thinking, and I think it's that valuable. When we talk about an issue, about start times in the school, I am not going to make that decision, I'm not going to rely on this school board to simply make that decision without any input from anybody else, and I'm just suggesting, we've got to have some process, that's all.
But basically, what I was thinking about this, as we were talking about, is just provide an opportunity for dialogue that may be off of our normal script that we have in meetings and do some brainstorming.
So that could be, yeah, that could be a workshop meeting.
Yeah.
Where we don't do any business, we bring thoughts and ideas about how we can tackle this project together, and whether we add a special meeting or utilize probably the second meeting in January, we call that a workshop meeting. Some districts have one business meeting, one workshop meeting every month. So one meeting a month is a presentation of some sort, some dialogue amongst board members, the public is obviously welcome to be there, but their comments are not solicited at that point. And it sounds to me like there's a lot of divergent ideas, but really with a similar goal of how we can make our district better. So, you know, to ask a rhetorical question, and everybody in this room is going to have a different answer, what's our moral purpose here? What's our moral purpose as a board, as a principal, as a community member, as a teacher? And shouldn't we have one that we keep going back to and keep thinking about when we're approving programs, when we're approving budgetary recommendations? And, you know, obviously, the easy one is, well, to educate all children, but what does that mean to everyone? And do we educate all children equally? Does everyone have the same opportunity, the same level of challenge and whatnot? And when's the last time we looked at the mission statement?
In what time?
No, it's a good point. It's a good point.
But that should be what's directing every one of our decisions.
So maybe that's where we start to reassess whether that, the mission statement that hangs outside my office, that is quite lengthy, whether that's really where we've been and where we want to go.
I don't know how to turn this.
That's okay.
It actually brought some wonderful levity to this discussion, so we really appreciate it, actually. If anyone else has phones, please let them know.
Go on.
Well, I didn't mean any offense to you personally, but I do have a different way of looking at things than you do, and I think that's what makes this board so special. And I asked for some information I haven't received, I checked up on that information again, and I still haven't received anything, not to throw Mr. Surtisio on the bus, he's been busy, but it is a piece that in discussion, he says he's not sure where he wanted to be now. So I think our administrators and the cabinet have a lot to do with focusing on where our challenges are and need to be. And that's why I asked him for that information.
That's great. Okay. And I'm just going to point and push, and that is, it doesn't answer my question, and...
I told you I'd be fine with it, I'm just, I'm not sure in the forum and what process we use, and that's why I asked for guidance from Mr. Surtisio.
That's cool.
I think that it sounds like the start of it would be just to be together and to talk, so I think that's something we can do, and at least we can start with that.
That'd be great, so maybe what we could do is look at a special meeting, we try to collect time that might work for folks. Okay? That'd be great, and talk with Ms. Slagel and Mr. Surtisio. To be clear, do you want to add a meeting in January, or do you want to utilize the second meeting as a workshop? I think we're going to add a meeting, and we're going to throw out at least one Saturday morning and one evening, or, you know, we'll, the idea of either a Saturday morning or an evening, how about that? Mr. Jamberon, you thought about that?
That's, that's very good. Well, I mean, we could just do some discussion and limit it to a few, and then spend the next one on working on those.
Yep. Possibly. I'm not committed to anything other than, you know, Mr. Hock?
That's fine, this is just going to be a workshop or a retreat.
Yep. Sound good? Mr. Forster? Good? Yep. Okay. Thanks.
Very good.
Excellent. Appreciate that. Okay, so then, I think that takes us, boards reserve this time to hear comments from the audience who is wishing to address the board or asked to stand, give their name and address, limit their comments to five minutes or less per individual or group. Audience members seeking a response should complete a board correspondence sheet, return to Ms. Slagel either before you leave today, or you can drop it off. So is there anyone who wishes to address the board on any item whatsoever?
I'd like, sure. Andy Ludwig, 30 Ryan Place, and I don't have a question to present, but I do have a comment. I'm sitting here listening to this discussion about a strategic planner, the need for some strategic planning. In my mind, a superintendent is a strategic planner, a superintendent is a facilitator, and a superintendent is a leader. And to a person, you board members, you're not showing a whole lot of confidence in Mr. Surtisio to do that, saying that you need someone else to facilitate, saying that you can't come together as a board. You're just not showing any confidence in the man whose contract you just extended and you just gave him an $8,000 raise.
Anyone else wish to address the board on any item at all? Okay, seeing none, that's concluded. Then announcements, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be held January 8 at 6:00 PM in the high school library, and then we're likely to have a special meeting scheduled that will also announce. One other item that I would just mention to folks, you know, we've really been lucky. We had two presentations this evening, we had two presentations previously that I would just highlight, one by Cooper Stanger and then also Casey Doolittle. I just want to mention a few things, and I actually prepared something that I'd like to just share with folks. The Board of Education has had numerous presentations by students recently, including presentations by two individual students. Cooper Stanger presented his concerns about the district's policy and practices regarding recycling, using renewable and sustainable materials, composting, and reusing materials. Casey Doolittle presented her concerns regarding the district's mascot. Cooper Stanger's presentation did not receive widespread coverage because the district lost its public channel videographer. Jax here tonight, we really appreciate that, and thank you so much for helping us out. Additionally, our nearly always-present Observer reporter, M.J., was not available that particular evening. And it really was an extraordinary presentation by Cooper, just a lovely individual and, you know, so thoughtful, and presence was astounding, really. Casey Doolittle's presentation, for possibly good reason, received front page coverage in The Observer and was the lead story or close to the lead story in The Observer's online edition. Casey Doolittle's concerns about the district's mascot and her suggestion that the district consider changing the mascot received tens of comments online at The Observer. Many of the comments would be unacceptable if stated in a classroom within this building because they were callous and really what could be considered bullying. The board wishes to make it clear, and I did share this with every board member beforehand, the board wishes, and asked for comments, the board wishes to make it clear that we law students, and residents generally, who choose to come to our board and make presentations or bring appeals. The board wishes to recognize these two students especially for being upstanders. That is, if you need to know, people who seek to create a stronger, safer, and more supportive community, and that's for all students and all district residents. The board, too, wishes to reassert its support for student inquiry of all sorts, healthy curiosity, inquisitiveness, free and open discussion, and civic concern and involvement. The board also wishes to let our students and district residents know that we support and encourage student and resident upstanders. The board is proud to have so many upstanders who are not unlike Cooper Stanger and Casey Doolittle, and our award-winning spectator journalist who we highlighted tonight, our many learn-and-serve students, our hillbilly market students, our Model UN students, our middle school musical, our high school musical participants, and on, and on, and on. We welcome our students and residents and their thoughts and ideas, and their best imaginings for our district and our community. Mr. Jamberon, anything?
No, thank you.
Mr. Hock?
Thank you for saying that. I think that I had not read any of the articles, but, you know, it seems as if there was a lot of sensitivity towards that, so thank you for saying that. And one other thing, I think Dorado was a good part of instrumenting the broadcasting, is am I correct with that?
No. No, I was waiting, I was going to wait until they came around me, but it was truly Christine, a lot of the kudos goes to her, she found this student who was walking through our hallway and said, hey, what do you think about this? Who then got in touch with Ted Sharon at the SUNY Fernando Professor in the Department of Theater and Drama, and then he met with Doug Prince, who then decided, hey, I think we could work on some audio. So it's definitely been a team effort to get this project up and going with it, so...
Christine, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mike. Mr. Forster?
Thank you for your comments there, and, no, nothing else.
Ms. Powell-Forten?
Gary, have a statement to give, Mr. Jax.
Mr. Aldrich?
Mr. Bobstein, thank you, you did an attorney's presentation. Before I read yours, which I should comment was very well-written, I wrote my own, and as you know, I prepared it. And if I could, I would personally, I'd take this time to commend you and Casey Doolittle and her mother for coming to our board meeting last month. Casey wrote a letter to Ms. Piper asking about our mascot, the hillbilly, and she had the courage to come here personally and address our board, asking us to consider changing our mascot to something less controversial. Casey did her research by looking up the word hillbilly, and she told us that it is defined as an uneducated, simple person. There are many words in our English language that have several, sometimes conflicting meanings. meanings. Cool and hot come to my mind. Cool doesn't always mean cool, and hot doesn't always mean hot, and sometimes cool and hot can mean the same thing. The word orange is not only a color, but it's a fruit. Black can be a color, but it also can be something sinister. But together, orange and black mean something very different and dear to us all, the Fredonia hillbillies. Well, Webster's will never acknowledge the second opposing definition of a hillbilly, someone who is proud of their school and their great education that our students receive here at Fredonia. My definite definition includes someone who has the courage to ask questions, as young Casey has, someone who also has the courage to stand up against great, against great odds with conviction, dedication, and determination, someone who doesn't go along with the crowd just because it seems to be the thing to do. Nowhere in this second definition is a true Fredonia hillbilly supposed to mock or ridicule someone just for having that opposing view. A true Fredonia hillbilly treats all people with respect. That is the R in our pride award. I personally publicly apologized to Casey and her mother for comments others have made on social media lashing out against someone questioning our mascot. The mascot, the hillbilly mascot, I believe, Mr. Jan Broon, you may know more than I do, originated from the old high school where Relot...
That was very original.
Originated from the old high school where Relot's school is now. Fredonia is known as the hilltoppers, being on the top of the hill on West Main.
Your book was a hilltopper.
Thank you.
1938, they had a big thing about the hillbilly, why they're called hillbillies. The yearbook was always called a hilltopper.
Okay. The hilltoppers morphed into the hillbillies?
Uh, no.
That's my take. I don't know if that's actually true or not.
Pardon me?
Did it morph from hilltoppers to hillbilly?
That I really don't know.
Now, I don't speak for the entire Board of Education on it. Personally support keeping the hillbilly as our mascot, not because of the first definition, but because the second definition that Webster's and Google don't know about. I'm proud of the orange and black, proud of being a Fredonia hillbilly, and I'm proud of young Casey Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Aldrich. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Piper?
So we have our Learn and Serve Club being on a holiday festivus day on Friday, encouraging all of our students and staff who dress up in their holiday attire to celebrate the day and to raise some money for Learn and Serve so they can do more things for the community. We also have our all-school traditional pajama party the day before Christmas and holiday winter break, so we'll, looking mean, we'll be in our pajamas for the day, do a lot of fun. And we're actually ending the day that day in an all-school sing-along karaoke in the auditorium, so, looking forward to it.
Ms. Traubman?
Tonight is our middle school concert with all our ensembles down there, so hopefully you can catch some of it after this. Our student council is sponsoring a sports activity afternoon this Friday. We're trying something new instead of having it at night, from 2:30 to 4:30. We're going to have basketball, volleyball, mat ball, a movie, and a game room. So we're going to see how it goes right after school versus at night. Our Learn and Serve was bringing the Salvation Army belt today, so collecting money. Next week, we are celebrating Spirit Week, so Monday we're going to have Pajama Day, Tuesday, Deck the Halls, the kids are going to be decorating the halls. Wednesday is our favorite character day. We're going to dress up in our favorite Christmas chara, or holiday character. Thursday is Ugly Sweater Day, so you'll see lots of ugly sweaters. Monday and Tuesday next week will be our honor roll breakfast. Five and six are on Monday, seven and eight are Tuesday. So from 7:00 to 7:30, we've invited all the families that have made, students' families of honor roll to come in and have some breakfast with us. And the Fredonia faculty players will be performing on the 19th and 20th in the morning, so I'm excited about participating in that.
Thanks.
Busy week's coming up.
That's a lot. That's a lot. Mr. Pashke?
We have our high school winter concert coming up on December 18. I always look forward to that concert because not only does it showcase our amazing students and families, but they also invite alumni to come back and sing and play in the band. It's always fun to be able to do that. A great opportunity for our community members to come back and play and sing as well. We have our Spirit Week coming up, the 17th through the 20th, pretty much the same days. We, I think we've been meshing a lot with the middle school. We've been working on trying to, to maintain the same types of things, even with our pride. We have our Pride Cookies and Cocoa event coming up where we're recognizing students and families. We invite them for Cookies and Cocoa. And what's really awesome is our print shop is phenomenal. They printed up these tickets that are so professional-looking, and the teachers handed them out to the kids today, inviting them to the Cookies and Cocoa event, so they all get their little admission ticket. It looks better than something you get at Shays. It's top-notch. I think that's, that's all I wanted to have. Thank you.
Mr. Forbes?
I just want to thank the board for their comments tonight. I think that social media creates an air of negativity that often is picked up by people that don't really understand the subject matter, and I appreciate your comments. On a different note, we have an honor committee meeting, 4:30 on December 18. Mr. Sedora will be joining us to do the internal claims audit report, and we have a number of other agenda items to cover.
That's great. And Mr. Ray?
I just want to let the board know that we are currently looking for host families to host an exchange student for the next school year. We don't know if this will be a boy or an girl yet. We will soon figure that out. If anybody's interested in that, I have additional information. We have been hosting students here in room, I think, for over 25 years. It's an amazing program.
Over 40.
Over 40. Over 40.